Good evening. It is Wednesday, March 20, 2024, and welcome to the Town of Carmel. This is a town board meeting. It is a voting meeting followed by a work session. We have two public hearings, followed by 14 voting items, and then nine or eight work session, eight work sessions, and then we have some claims, potential litigation, and personnel in the work session, in the executive session. If everyone please rise and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those men and women in uniform protecting our liberties. Thank you.
Alice's speed.
Local law two. If our town clerk, Alice Daly, would do a roll call attendance, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Present.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Here.
Councilman Lombardi?
Present.
Supervisor Kazari?
Here. Before our first public hearing, we open up to public comment. If any resident would like to get up and speak for five minutes, just tell us your name and whereabouts that you live in town, please.
How are you today? So we're, if you want, we're the residents from Prince Lane. This has brought up, you know, been brought up to Rich Franzetti. You know, we're looking at having the road to see if it can be paved. To our understanding, it's a road that's owned by the town, or it's on town property. You know, so we just wanted to see, I mean, if you guys will be willing to work, you know, with with us, the residents, you know, to try to get the road paved. They came in yesterday, you know, to fill the road, the holes, but, you know, year over year, you know, the roads just keep on getting worse and worse. You know, there's kids that come down, you know, summertime, wintertime, you know, last thing you'll do, you know, somebody to get hurt. You know, so just want to see, I mean, you know, what what would the town be willing to do, you know, with us, the residents?
This is Prince Road?
Prince Lane.
Oh, Prince Lane.
So, Mr. Gonzalez and I spoke, we've probably spoken four or five times over since the new year about this, or late last year. And in all candor, I thought we would put it on this agenda tonight for a work session item because they did file a petition to form a highway improvement district. The engineering department did actually create an estimate for what the improvements would be. And that's something that in my conversations with our highway superintendent, we're going to revisit and hopefully come up with a different estimate. With respect to highway improvement districts, the roads don't have to be fully built to town spec with 22 feet inside curb to inside curb. They can be, they can have a shorter width or a lesser width, and maybe that'll change the estimate. The tricky part here is the actual roadbed is is town property as opposed to private property that would be dedicated to the town at the conclusion of the improvements. But it's something that we need to look into a little further, and I spoke to Mike Stern about it a couple times, and if we can put it on for a formal work session item for the 10th, so that we can review the petition and talk about a course of action, if you would.
Thank you.
So April 10th for a work session?
April 10th.
We'll have it on, we'll have it on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Comrade Frank Ciano, so I heard we have a little funding for Swan Cove. Is, do you guys have a, know what it's going to cost, anything like that? You do? Okay. They said we got $2 million. I just don't want to go over budget like, you know, some of the things did in town, like the library that we're still paying for for 20 years, the firehouse for 20 years. I mean, they did rob $6 million from us. Where'd that go? Maybe we could use that. I don't know. And what happened to ATI? Nothing yet? Said a couple weeks? We couldn't talk about it. Maybe we could talk about what's going on with ATI. I know you're going to tell me, Cam. It's okay. Is there a time in our park, in the town? Is it like dusk to dawn? Are you allowed to hang out there after 6 o'clock? I don't see no signs. I seen a bunch of people. I don't know. But our lake community is getting a little crowded. Okay, so maybe we could put some, I don't know. You guys are the people here. Let's work on some things here. Put some signs up. Maybe, are they allowed to stay there until midnight? Because they were Tuesday. I mean, 16, 18 people. That's a lot of people, I think. I mean, so what's going on? Is there, is there a sign up? I know you can't answer, but we should get on top of something like that. Maybe we should put meetings in. I don't know. Maybe we should, maybe, I don't know. Let's work on something, guys, please. Enough is enough here. You guys do work for the taxpayers.
Yeah, Frank, just clarification. Swan Cove people are Chamber Park?
No, it was a park. They weren't in the Cove.
They were in?
Chamber Park? I just want to clarify. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
People that were there, okay.
I think so.
Yes, it's dawn to dusk.
It is.
And it was posted. I don't know.
Nina's here, yeah.
They are dawn to dusk. I mean, the, 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 we have their run a little bit later, but besides, they should be.
All town parks, yeah. No smoking, no alcohol, and dawn to dusk. Yes.
Hi, everybody. Charlie Elsner. Congratulations on getting the bond for the park or parking lot, whatever it'll be. It's exciting news. Our downtown definitely needs the parking and the stuff that goes along with it. I was excited to read about it. I think it's a great thing, so I want to commend everybody that was involved in getting that done, and I look forward to see the future plans for whatever that's going to happen with it. I wondered if we were going to be doing zoning, if we were going to be back on zoning anytime soon again. In the beginning, there was some meetings and stuff were going on. If that happens again, I'd love to be a part of it. And that's it. Nice to see everybody again. Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if there are no other public comments, yes, thank you. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So our first public hearing is on a proposed local law amending Chapter 156 of the Code of the Town of Carmel entitled zoning, specifically 15641 entitled signs. This, this change to the zoning is part of beautification. It's to remove the flashing lights, the multiple signs, to try to make it, to make them more uniform, not have all those lights that we see in the middle of town that makes it look like the old Times Square. So that's the purpose of this. So if there are no objections, we'll waive the reading of the actual law. There are no objections. So the microphone, it's open to any public?
I mean, considering that the proposed local law is actually kind of short, it's probably good if we were to read it. If you don't want to read it, we can.
No, I can read it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the town board of the Town of Carmel will conduct a public hearing at Town Hall, 60 McAlpin Avenue, Mahopac, New York, 10541, on Wednesday, March 20, 2024, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter that evening as possible, on a proposed local law amending Chapter 156 of the Code of the Town of Carmel entitled zoning, specifically Section 156, 156 dash 41 thereof entitled signs. Copies of the full text of the proposed local law are available at the town clerk's office in Town Hall during normal business hours, as well as posted on the Town of Carmel's website at www.c i dot carmel dot m y dot U S. At said public hearing, all interested persons shall be heard on the subject thereof. The town board will make every effort to assure that the public hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and/or reasonable accommodations should contact the town clerk by order of the town board of the Town of Carmel, Alice Daly, Town Clerk.
Thank you. So if anyone has a public comment about this, please.
So this is just about the neon lights all over town, and we're just restricting it, or you guys just don't want it?
It's restricting the lights.
Too many neon lights, or, you know, is it just, are you allowed to have one?
It's a percentage of the window front.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay, okay, so that was it. Thank you.
And it's also the signs, like when you look at, a lot of businesses have all those signs in front of?
I agree.
The whole window is blocked. You can't see in?
I agree, but the problem is, you know, we have 19 pizzerias, we have 19 delis, we have 19 hair salons, you know, the guys, everybody's who's better than who, the neon lights are like, you know, we can't allow too many more of them either.
Well, that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay, just make sure. I'm sorry.
Mike Lugo, resident of Mahopac. I own Exclusive Cuts Barbershop right here in town. I just wanted to make sure I was reading this right. So I saw that it was 25% of the window that couldn't be illuminated. Is that, is that what this is saying? Is there a strip, are we allowing a strip around the window, like around the whole storefront window?
I, no, I don't, I do not.
I'm trying to, you're not.
No, no.
Do you have a copy of the?
Yeah, yeah. I'm a little confused about the wording, though.
It's 25% ceiling and a total window or something. So if you had a strip around the whole thing, though.
That's what, that's less than 25%. That's what I'm asking.
It can't be.
Yes, so that's probably around the whole thing. It's got to be more than 25%.
Of the window?
Well, it depends upon, like, if it's a small, like, rope. That's probably you're talking about, like, this small rope just going around.
I agree that, I don't, you know, I don't like the look of the whole window being covered, LEDs, you know, signs flashing and stuff, but I'm just curious, as like, in my window, I have a nice strip, clean strip around the whole window. Is that going to be allowed?
It does count towards the 25%. Yes, the roping still does. From what I understand, yes.
Number three. H3. All signs within a window, permanent neon LED and/or temporary combined area, shall not exceed 25% of the total area of the window in which the signs are located.
So that's got to be less than, a thin strip.
No, that's what I'm making sure.
Yeah.
Hold on a second. Hold on. It depends upon your size of the window.
Yeah, I don't want to, yeah, I'm not going to say yes or no, because that's something you guys have to, yeah.
Yeah, you should contact Mike Carnazza.
I want to clarify.
Yeah, he'll make sure for you, just to make sure.
I can still have my strip around my window.
Yeah, that's.
But a caseful strip is different than the blinking lights.
I totally agree. I cannot stand looking at certain.
It's for safety also, you know, yes.
You have a, you have a big window.
It's obnoxious.
You have a big window. You put that strip around it. That's not 25%.
Just to make sure. Yeah, but I would, I would call Mike Carnazza and just clarify with him.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other public comment, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have a resolution making the CECA determination in regard to this local law amending 156, the Town Code, Town of Carmel entitled zoning. Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby determines that local law number?
Two.
Two, thank you, of 2024, amending Chapter 156 of the Carmel Town Code entitled zoning is a type 2 action under CECA pursuant to six, New York, C R R, 617.5 sub C, and no further review is necessary. Offer this as read.
Second.
Seconded by Kearns. And do we need a roll call, Matt? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, on to our, oh, should we? All right. Can I get a motion to enact the?
You get a motion to enact it as noted in the petition? Yes.
Oh, can I get a?
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
So they both seconded. Give it a little call on that, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. So our second public hearing is again amending Chapter 156 of the Code of the Town of Carmel entitled zoning. This is.
Go ahead.
Okay. This is, again, putting a moratorium on smoke shops and vape shops, vape shops in the Town of Carmel. We are extending the moratorium again because we have one more meeting on the master plan, and then we'll, oh, thank you. We have one more meeting on the master plan, and then we hope to put out that draft and very soon after adopt the zoning in the master plan where smoke shops and vape shops will be addressed in the master plan. So we're just extending the moratorium one more time. If there's no one objecting to reading of the moratorium.
Move to open.
Okay, move to open the public hearing?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So does anyone like to speak about smoke shops, vape shops, the moratorium on the smoke shops or vape shops?
I think, Frank?
There'd be none.
We're not putting this down to where we're going, that's.
It's, no more can open up?
No.
Hmm? Oh, till September 15?
That's when the moratorium runs.
Yeah, it's until September 15. That's when it ends.
Or you can sell your smoke shop to somebody else.
I don't know.
You know, you can, you know, you're allowed to sell it for something, you know, can you do that?
I don't know.
No, no. The moratorium is on the issuance of building permits and/or CFOs for the construction establishment operation of new ones.
It says new. It says new. It says new, yeah.
But you can sell your business?
If they sold, it'd be a new operation, no?
Yeah.
But it already has, but already has a.
But you can't make any reservations and get a new building permit.
Well, this is in effect, if it's passed, then you have no building permit to sell. Correct.
Yeah. All right. If there's no other comment?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have a, yeah, we have a resolution making the CECA determination in regard to local law number three, amending Chapter 156 of the Town Code of the Town of Carmel entitled zoning. Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby determines that local law number three of 2024, amending Chapter 156 of a Carmel Town Code entitled zoning, is a type 2 action under CECA pursuant to six, New York, C R R, 617.5 C, and no further review is necessary. Offer this as read. Can I get a second?
So moved. Second.
And can we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. And can we get a motion to enact the moratorium?
So moved.
Taken.
And all those in favor? No. Roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. So a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Close the public hearing. Yep.
If you haven't closed it already.
Yeah.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And how about a motion to open the voting meeting?
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Lombardi, and then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So a motion to accept the minutes from the February 21, 2024, meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
So moved. Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous. So our first resolution in the voting meeting is authorizing budget modifications. Councilman Kearns, could you read that for us?
Whereas, whereas Town Controller Mary Ann Maxwell has reviewed the proposed budget modifications for the period ending February 29, 2024, with the town board, which are detailed and explained on the attached budget revision scheduled number 2024 dash 01. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes and ratifies the budget modifications revisions for the period ending February 29, 2024, as shown itemized on the schedule number 2024 dash 01, which is attached hereto, incorporated herein, and made a part hereof. Offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Our second resolution is making appointment to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee. Councilman Lombardi, could you read that one?
Sure. Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby appoints Lindsey Jones to the Town of Carmel Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee for a term commencing April 1, 2024, and expiring December 31, 2026. I offer this resolution as read. Second.
Seconded by both.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Our third resolution is, again, making an appointment to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, resolved that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby reappoints Michael Mongan to the Town of Carmel Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee for a term commencing April 1, 2024, and expiring December 31, 2026. I offer this as read.
Second.
Seconded by McDonough and Lombardi. All, no, roll call.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Our fourth resolution is declaring certain equipment obsolete and authorizing its disposal. Councilwoman McDonough, could you read that?
Yes. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Town of Carmel Superintendent of Highways, Michael Stern, the Town Board of the Town of Carmel hereby declares the following vehicle to be obsolete and authorizes their disposal in accordance with town law, including but not limited to town law Section 642A. The first is car number eight. It's a 2011 Ford VIN number two, F as in Frank, A, B, P, seven B, Victor, eight, B, X, one, eight, three, oh, six, five. And the second one is a truck number 56. It's a 2000 Mac, VIN number V as in Victor, G, six, M, one, one, eight, C, two, Y, B, three, oh, three, eight, one, four. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Seconded by Lombardi, and we have a roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Resolution number five, authorizing purchase of equipment, Town of Carmel Highway Department. Councilman Kearns, could you read that?
Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel, upon the recommendation of Town of Carmel Highway Superintendent Michael Stern, hereby authorizes the purchase of impeller unit and ancillary parts for truck number 58 from Long Island Sanitation Company, Farmandale, New York, at a cost not to exceed $11,929, in accordance with the, quote, proposal dated March 4, 2024. And be it further resolved, the Town Controller, Mary Ann Maxwell, is hereby authorized to make any and all necessary budget revisions to effect the repairs authorized herein. Offer this resolution as read.
Second. Seconded by Councilman Lombardi, and a roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Next is a resolution acknowledging performance of emergency repairs, Carmel Water and Sewer Districts. Councilman Lombardi, could you read that one?
Sure. Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel, acting as commissioners of the various water and sewer districts of the Town of Carmel, hereby acknowledges the emergency performance of water and sewer distribution collection systems, distribution systems and treatment facilities, repairs within Carmel Water District number two, as fully detailed in the memorandum of town engineer Richard Franzetti, P E, to the town board dated March 6, 2024, as attached hereto and made part hereof. I offer this resolution as read. Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Number seven is authorizing, advertising for bids, water and sewer district chemical supplies. Resolve that pursuant to request of town engineer Richard J. Franzetti, P E. Town clerk Alice Daly is hereby authorized to advertise for bids for purchase of chemical supplies for Town of Carmel Water and Sewer District Treatment Plants, and be it further resolved that the town engineer is to furnish detailed specifications for the above to the town clerk to be used in conjunction with the town's general bid conditions and specifications. I offer this as read.
Second.
Seconded by Lombardi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight is authorizing payment to East Hudson Watershed Corporation. Council McDonough, could you read that, please?
Sure. Resolve that upon the recommendation and determination of town engineer Richard J. Franzetti, P E., the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes payment of the sum of $26,021.22 to the East of Hudson Watershed Corporation, E O H W C, for operation and maintenance related to the 2023 Town of Carmel's overall phosphorus reduction requirements, as well as in accordance with the operations and maintenance policy for E O H W C previously adopted by the Carmel Town Board, as well as the invoice from E O H W C dated February 22, 2024. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Seconded by Kearns, and a roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. The next resolution is adopting amended organizational chart. Councilman Kearns, could you read that?
Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes the renewal of the contract with Auctions International East Aurora, New York, for the sale of town vehicles, machinery and equipment. machinery and equipment, said contract to be in general form and content as attached hereto and made a part hereof, and be it further resolved, that town supervisor Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the Town of Carmel, I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
All those in, no, roll call.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi? Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Alright, now the amended organizational chart.
Resolve the town board of the town of Carmel hereby adopts and ratifies the Town of Carmel organizational chart as amended in form as attached hereto and made part hereof, effective immediately, I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Seconded by McDonough, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number eleven, uh, resolution authorizing entry into a contract for ATM Services Town Hall Facility. Resolve that the town board of the town of Carmel hereby authorizes the entry into a contract with ABER Berlinma. Berlinme.
Oh, you were close.
Replacement of an automatic teller machine at the Carmel Town Hall Facility. Said contract to be in general form and content as attached hereto and made a part thereof, and be it further resolved that town supervisor Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the Town of Carmel. I offer this as read?
Second.
And can we have a roll call?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi? Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Uh, the twelfth resolution is accepting proposal for water cooler equipment and supplies. Councilwoman McDonough, could you read that?
Yes, resolve that the town board of the town of Carmel hereby accepts the proposal of W B Mason, Inc., for the supply of drinking water and water cooler equipment and supplies for the Town Hall, Town of Carmel Highway Department, and Town of Carmel Police Department. Locations at an annual estimated cost of seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. And be it further resolved that the town supervisor, Michael Kazari, is hereby authorized to execute any and all documentation necessary to effectuate this authorization on behalf of the Town of Carmel. Just a question, wasn't recreation included in this? Cause it's not on this resolution. Yes, Town Hall, Town of Carmel Highway Department, Town of Carmel Police Department, locations. But I, but I thought it was recreation as well.
It is.
Yeah, just amended.
So, can I just say, and recreation? I'm amending to add, um, the Town of Carmel Recreation Department, I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi? Supervisor Kazari?
Yes, um, our third resolution, oh, our thirteenth resolution. Council Lombardi, would you read that one?
Sure. Whereas sweeping reforms were enacted to the New York Criminal Justice Statute during the two thousand and nineteen state legislative session, and whereas several of the drastic changes in the law pertaining to discovery and bail are overly broad and vague and have unintended consequences at the municipal level, all of which have been evident over the course of the past four years. And whereas the dramatically shortened time periods which prosecutors must disclose evidence to defendants, and the broad expansion of the matters to which such discovery mandates apply has significant cost, tax, and justice implications for cities and villages with ta, with police departments, local justice courts, and/or code parking enforcement departments, and whereas cities, towns, and villages have not realized savings from the bail reform reductions of the burdens on county jails, and whereas law-abiding citizens of the Town of Carmel, Putnam County, and the entire state of New York have been less, made less safe in their own communities due to these bail reform measures. Now therefore be it resolved, town board of the Town of Carmel supports the following set of amendments which were initially proposed in the two thousand twenty by the New York State Conference of Mayors, which are consistent with the intent of the criminal justice reforms, but will also allow for more effective and affordable implementation. Number one, ensure that cities and villages are provided with additional financial and operating support to offset the cost of these mandated measures. Number two, allow sixty days for prosecutors to disclose evidence to defense for criminal charges. Number three, exclude from the ancillary discovery requirement any charge not involved in a misdemeanor or felony. Next, adjust the twenty-day arraignment requirement to accommodate local courts that meet on a monthly basis. Next, allow prosecutors to withhold sensitive information such as victim contact, victim contact information without having to obtain a court order. And next, judges must be given the discretion to order pre-trial detention by amendment of the bail reform measures which have put the citizens of the state of New York at risk. And be it further resolved that this duly adopted resolution of the Town of Carmel be forwarded to Governor Kathy Hochul, Senate Majority Leader Andrew Stewart Cousins, Assembly Speaker Carl Hestie, Senator Peter Harkam, and Assemblyman Matt Slater, and the New York State Conference of Mayors, all of, and all other municipalities in Putnam County and local media outlets, I offer this resolution as read.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilman Kearns?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi? Supervisor Kazari?
Yes.
So, just briefly, this is a resolution that I've drafted along with council the last three years. Uh, now that the legislative session has started again up in Albany, we demand the thirty-seven thousand people that we speak for here in the Town of Carmel that the bail reforms are deemed a failure and provide, um, less safety for all of the residents of New York State, and therefore, we want to make sure that our voices are heard during this process, uh, up in the legislature. And hopefully, one of these days, they will realize the, um, that these measures have made our town and many other municipalities and the city of New York less safe.
The fallacy to it.
And other states.
Other states.
And you don't have to really look too much further than the local stories every night to see that this has been a failure, so.
So, our, our last resolution for the voting meeting is, uh, ratifying memorandum of agreement with the Town of Carmel Police Benevolent Association, Inc., regarding establishment of administrative sergeant assignment. Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel authorizes entry into a memorandum of agreement with the Town of Carmel Police Benevolent Association, Inc., concerning the establishment of an administrative sergeant assignment within the Town of Carmel Police Department, which stipulation to be in general form and content as attached hereto and made a part hereof, and be it further resolved that town supervisor Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to execute the aforementioned memorandum of agreement after ratification and signature by the Town of Carmel Police Benevolent Association, Inc. I offer this as read?
Second.
Can we get a roll call on that, please?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi? Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Can we get a motion to adjourn the voting meeting?
So moved.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Alice Daly.
Good night.
So, how about a motion to open up the work session?
So moved.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I ask the board to please review the town board minutes from March sixth, two thousand twenty-four that you received from the clerk for accuracy. Uh, our first item, and our second item, is with our town comptroller, Mary Ann Maxwell. The first is to consider year-end two thousand twenty-four general and highway fund. Mary Ann?
Good evening. So, we are just about wrapping up, um, the town audit. Auditors have been here last week and this week, um, so, so far, so good. This is the, um, where we're ending two thousand twenty-three with our fund balances for the general and highway, uh, from twenty-two to twenty-three in the general fund. We did have a, a loss of just about four, a little over four hundred thousand. The main, um, what makes that up mostly is the mortgage tax revenue that was down just under six hundred thousand last year. We had budgeted one point three, and it came in a little under eight hundred thousand, so. Building department fees also were down two hundred and fifty-five thousand from two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three. Um, and our interest earnings were up, um, a little over three hundred thousand. Um, I had opened up a savings account, um, a tiered savings account late in two thousand twenty-two, and we did earn, you know, amongst all funds, over eight hundred thousand in that, in interest in those, in that account, so. Um, in our highway fund, uh, we had a surplus of just over nine hundred thousand in the highway fund. Um, winter of two thousand twenty-three, January, February of two thousand twenty-three was pretty mild, so we were able to save, um, a lot of money in the, you know, snow material and snow overtime line. We did move that to the capital fund balance, I think we talked about this a couple months ago. And now, we're able to use that money to purchase trucks and to, uh, pay for the drainage instead of borrowing, so. So, that's a good thing for the highway fund.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, you just wanna speak about the, for the increase from, from this chart, from two thousand sixteen to the present time, the total general and highway equity fund?
Yeah.
If you wanted to, I mean, I'll be more than happy to do. In two thousand sixteen, the combined total general and highway fund was eight million, five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Over that time, we've increased the fund to sixteen thousand, excuse me, sixteen million, four hundred fifty-three thousand dollars.
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
So, that's a combination of good accounting, good management, and good, and good budgeting.
And that's, you know, basically, we've been able to, because of the increase in the fund balance, we've been able to establish these capital fund balances. You know, we didn't, we didn't have a capital fund balance, you know, back in two thousand sixteen, our capital fund balance in the general fund was seven hundred and fifty thousand. Now it's three point two, you know, so we were, we were able to build, you know, um, that capital fund balance, and the same thing with the highway fund, you know, and back in two thousand sixteen, we had a capital fund balance of a hundred and fifty. And what I've been doing is I've been, you know, if we have a surplus, which we did over the years with mortgage tax revenue and with other things, um, I've been putting that, you know, kinda like in a savings account, if you, you know, look at it as a personal level, you know, on a personal level. You kinda just put it away, you know, in case you need it, so.
No, and it's worked out.
Yeah, so it, it has, you know, as you may remember, Moody's gave us a, a negative outlook because we were using our fund balance to offset our budget back in like twenty, I would say maybe twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, when the economy was tough, we were using our fund balance, and you, you know, Moody's says like, you know, whoa, you know, we're gonna put you on a negative outlook. We were able to increase, start increasing the fund balance, and they released that, so. So, that is good.
Yep. So, so the next item is, uh, consider final December of two thousand twenty-three budget revisions.
Yes, so this is, um, an additional budget revision that we have to pass and for December of two thousand twenty-three. This has to do with, um, ARPA funds. We, as you know, we received a little over three million dollars in ARPA funds. In two thousand twenty-three, we did use a hundred and ninety-eight thousand of that in the water tank project. Originally, I had recognized that revenue in the capital fund, but due to the ARPA rules that were designated by the feds, um, the revenue has to be recognized in the general fund and then transferred to the funds where the ARPA funds were obligated, okay? So, basically, I'm reversing the budget revision I originally did, recognizing it in the capital fund, and recognizing it now in the general funds, and transferring the money, so. So, going forward, that's what we're gonna be doing, is recognizing the revenue in the general fund and then transferring it to the projects where we're, our funds are obligated.
Alright, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Uh, next, two items are our Director of Parks and Recs, Nita Kalmar. First up is consider request to waive a rental fee.
Good evening, board, thank you for having me. So, um, our first item is, um, we're requesting to have park rental fees waived for the Kent White Sox Tribal Baseball League. Um, they actually reached out to us a few months ago in regards to this. They did come to our last Recreation Advisory Board meeting. We have one of the members here with us tonight, um, so. This team is comprised of about fifty families in the Carmel Central School District that reside primarily in the Town of Carmel and the Town of Kent. They are requesting that the Town of Carmel waive the rental fee for approximately two practices per week, but plan on paying, paying the rental fee for games during the season up at Kamara Park. Um, a little history about this team, and you'll see in the backup that we provided, um, they are from Carmel, they were, I guess, a part of CSA when they were established. And at this point, just so you guys know, CSA, um, isn't, um, doesn't have too many teams at this point. Up at Kamara Park, we only have one CSA team playing up there, so the park itself is being very underutilized, um, the baseball field in particular, and, um, COVID kind of, I guess you could say, um, killed the baseball league for them, so Kent White Sox moved over to the Town of Kent. Um, Recreation Department, that's where they're primarily playing right now. And when they came to us at our meeting, you know, they're really big into giving back to the community, which the Recreation Advisory Committee, um, and parks, we love that, you know? They, majority of them live in Majestic Ridge, right behind Kamara Park, and they really wanna see this park as their home field. Um, they are willing to pay for the games, but they're asking, um, the board or requesting to have some of their practices waived. And, um, you know, with the other team that is playing there, obviously, CSA teams do come first, the rec leagues that come through us, CSA, MSA come first on, on our field. Um, that one team, I did speak with them, they, it's a one, one softball team, they only play up there, I wanna say, two times a week, so we have the space for them. And if they're willing to give back to the community, doing different T-ball clinics, um, you know, giving back and, and building something for the park up there, we think that it would be a good idea to really get Carmel residents into our park system again. A lot of them go to different, um, recreation departments because, you know, with Town of Carmel Schools or Carmel Central Schools, they have all different kids from all different towns. So, they don't really have a quote-unquote "home," I guess you could say, and if we wanna really reach out to that side of the community, we think that this would be a great way to really get them involved.
Yeah, I know when Catherine came to, to speak at the meeting, you know, one of the first things I said, well, we really don't, you know, we really don't waive, but, um, you know, I know Nina looked into it, cause, you know, a concern that I had with any of the fields is you have to have downtime with the fields, just to make sure they're nice, and you looked into all of that.
Yep.
And, and the Kent League, you know, um, if you look down the back pages, they're, they're really willing to, um, to give back, which is really awesome, and they're, they're just a group of really good, dedicated, um, parents, and then, and then the children, so, um, I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to, to do that.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you, Nina. So, your second item is consider request to attend the New York State Recreation and Park Society Annual Conference.
Yep, um, so I am requesting approval to attend the New York State Recreation and Park Society Annual Conference that's scheduled for April fourteenth through April sixteenth at the Queensberry Hotel in Glens Falls, New York. Um, I attended the conference last year, and, um, I'm actually on the conference committee. Um, I am the vendor chair for our New York State Recreation and Park Society, so, um, we have about thirty-five vendors that are going to be attending that conference. Um, I will only be out of the office for Monday and Tuesday of that week. Um, the conference starts on Sunday, but will go up on Saturday, and I am requesting, um, the town cover the cost of attending the conference, which would be eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Any questions on the conference?
No.
No.
Nina, is, is that for, oh, I see, the registration, I got it.
Yep, it's for the registration fee for the actual conference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice up there in Queensberry.
It is, it is, a really nice area.
I have a question, what's a, what's a duck pluck fundraiser?
So, we do recreation, uh, this is, this is classic recreation conference, and if anybody else wants to come, board members, we'd love to have you. They do, they're going to do this year in the large pool that they have, um, at the Queensberry. Pretty much, we're gonna throw, I wanna say, thousands of ducks, rubber duckies, in the pool. Um, and it's a big fundraiser, so prior to the event, um, people are purchasing these ducks. And then some recreation specialists get in the pool, and they're going to make a nice big whirlpool, and then pluck a duck. And whoever wins that, there are some different prizes that go along with it, but it's a really good time. It's a fun conference to come to, as you could imagine, a bunch of recreation people together. They have a lot of different speakers, keynotes. And I think the most valuable thing are the vendors. You know, working with different vendors from different companies and really getting that face-to-face connection is, is the best thing for us and seeing what we can bring back to the town.
That's awesome.
You guys want to, you know?
I was going to say, I think.
I'm intrigued.
Jump in, something that's cold.
I'll send you the information.
Didn't somebody do one?
Rotary used to do it.
The Rotary.
Red Mills.
Red Mills.
Yeah, yeah.
But we didn't have to jump in.
No, no.
This one, you have to jump in.
Yeah, you got to jump in. We should really bring that back, too, to Red Mills.
That was fun, down the sleuth way.
Nina, you mentioned.
Yeah, we should bring them all.
If it's heated, I will go.
You mentioned vendors. Do you have the date for the farmer's market?
Farmer's market, yeah. Yep, the farmer's market will be starting on May 7. It'll be right around the corner. I believe right now, we have 20 vendors that are signed up for the market. We're still looking for more vendors to join on, so if you guys know of any vendors, definitely send them our way. And if I could speak on the egg hunt for just a moment. We have our annual egg hunt that is scheduled for this weekend, it's scheduled for Saturday. As of right now, the weather is not looking great, so we are going to postpone the event from Saturday to Sunday. It's going to be same time, same place, starts at 12 o'clock at the airport park. Depending on the weather, we'll figure out, you know, a plan B as to where we actually will put the eggs, seeing as we were going to be doing them on the athletic fields. But we have additional space up there. We may have to tweak it a little bit day of, maybe two different heats, one for the younger kid, kids, one for the older kids. But all the organizations that were planning on being there still will be able to come on Sunday, so it should be a lot nicer, sunny, no rain, and the bunny will be there, so, most importantly. We hope to see you guys there as well.
One of the things that Nina worked on, while we are in the process of doing the playground, there's going to be two big signs with the renderings of what the playground at, or airport park, park field is going to look like. So those renderings will be posted
Yep.
in time for the egg hunt, for people, for the residents to see what it's going to look like.
Yeah, and we're really excited, one, for, for people to actually see what we've been working on, as well as just the airport park in general. I think that a lot of residents don't go up to the airport park. It's, you know, majority of families that go there for MSA. So, you know, we are so excited just to show the community what we've been working on and what we have planned in the future. And those, those renderings will be a great way to show them what's to come.
And, and you know, ju- just very briefly, I just want to give you kudos to the, the coaches for the pickleball are amazing.
Oh, good.
I knew nothing about it, and I'm like, I can hit the ball over the net and do stuff, but it's really a lot of fun, and their coaches are really good, so thank you for putting that together also.
Of course, and they really volunteered their time in the beginning, and they, you know, I think that they're, it's an asset for us, you know, to have them and their knowledge. And I hope you continue playing, come down to St. Mor Park during the spring when, you know, it's just open play, so, but, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So the next item is from our assessor, Glenn Drosy. Consider request to renew the assessment support services. Gar Associates, there's a three-year agreement back on the table from the proposal from Glenn. What they do is they give our assessor another set of eyes on where the values of the properties are going, so that it's not just the assessor's office. It's, it's another data point to help them keep us at 100% assessed value. Right, Greg?
Yeah, we've, we've had them on, Greg, four or five years?
Yeah.
Not more, yeah, anymore.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's a valuable resource. The sixth item is with our town engineer, Richard J. Franzetti. Consider request for more emergency repairs and services.
Good evening, Board. As Supervisor Kazari said, this is for emergency services. On February 23, B&amp;J, the operators of Carmel Water District 8, notified the engineering department that the water treatment plant experienced a major shutdown due to the failure of control panel CPU for the automatic operation of all the systems at the filter plant. There are two invoices attached, one for $10,360 for B&amp;J to be there to manually operate and troubleshoot the plant, and $5,276.80 for gem engineering to make the repair. As this was at the water plant, the cost for the repair is typically allocated as provided in the table in there for districts in Carmel, Water District 1, 8, 10, and 13, because they each are supplied by that water treatment plant. I request a memorandum to be put onto the agenda as a matter of record. Any questions?
No.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Very quick for you. Our highway superintendent, Michael Stern, consider highway spring bid awards, sir.
Good evening. We are here today for, again, our spring material bid awards, and that's going to be for item four, crush gravel, blacktop, curbex, and our poly pipe. So as there continues to be issues associated with supplies and deliveries, as well as scheduling and the quality of materials, I am recommending that some of the materials be awarded to more than one vendor as well.
That's something that Simone used to pull.
He used to what?
Nothing.
It makes sense.
Yeah, it did make sense, it did.
Scheduling becomes a big issue with the blacktop, so. Any questions? Thank you, guys.
Commissioner? So, last item on the work session is from the Mahopac Volunteer Fire Department. Consider request to amend their bylaws. Commissioner Rehamel?
Good evening, members of town board. As you saw in the email I had sent last week, we're looking to amend our bylaws to allow a broader spectrum of members to be accepted. Our current bylaws now require that you live within our fire protection district or work in this district in order to be a member. In order to expand upon that, our articles of incorporation state that we can operate within the town of Carmel, so we feel operating within the town of Carmel is just a simple in-house bylaw change. But in order to expand beyond the town borders into Somers, Broken Falls, or potentially Kent, it's a matter of interpretation of the definition of vicinity from the enough proper corporation law. We understand that there's got to be a reasonable distance set on being able to respond, and we've determined that we feel four and a half miles from headquarters would be considered within the vicinity. This way, you're 30 miles an hour, technically about 10 minutes from here. And although we have stations on either end of the district, we used here for a response for EMS calls. I don't think there will be a great increase in cost to the workers' comp insurance. It's just a matter of when potential candidates come before you to extend the workers' comp benefits, that if you see an address outside the town of Carmel, you know why. We do have requirements that the members who join who are outside, or we will have requirements, maintain their residency where they are. If they move, then they will no longer be, able to be a member.
Do you have any potential recruits right now that are outside the district?
I am told yes. Do I personally? No, no, but the bylaw was proposed by the chief, I believe, for a reason of people asking. Sometimes it's a matter of a couple of people being friends, one that might live Maybach, one might live in Maybach Falls, one might live in Somers who want to join together. I don't know of any particular at this moment.
Yeah, and actually, I was going to ask you that same, kind of along the same lines is, I, I mean, are we, and I understand trying, friends trying to get together and join, that's a wonderful thing. Are we weakening other fire protection districts by take, by taking someone that could be, for example, in Somers, go to Somers Volunteer Fire Department?
Well, that's, that's their choice if they want to join in where they live. I'm, I'm sure that's understandable. If they have reason, they may not want to join there, want to join here. You know, different departments take members at different times, so they may not be eligible for membership in Somers, where they may be eligible for membership here. I don't know what the requirements are in all the departments.
Okay. Because Carmel has that already.
Carmel, yes. Carmel's membership requirements are broader.
Yeah.
I don't know the exact stipulations of them, but I know they're, they're wider.
Definitely the town of Kent and, yeah.
I, we do have members who joined who lived and worked in the district, and our bylaws allow for, once you, if you join and you're a resident, if you move, you can still remain a member. This would allow for non-residents to become members.
Well, with the need for members.
And it can only help, yes.
It can only help us, yes.
Ray, how do you guys, is it like yearly that they have to show that there's still residents there?
The document for the applicants, oh, hang on a second, I'm sorry. I know it was in here, I apologize.
No, that, that's because, because.
There is something that, that has to be done in order to prove that the residency has not changed and it's still in the court files.
Perfect.
I don't know the exact wording right now in front of me.
Yeah, that, that's okay.
I think it's under, Ray, I think it's under section 1402.
Section 1402.
C3. That big paragraph.
Such members shall be entitled to the whole act of members' purpose as long as they continue to reside or be employed at the location at the time of their application, or if they relocate to a residence or place of employment, they will meet some section of the above, which is defining the vicinity. It defines residents or location of their usual occupation within four and a half road miles, travel distance from Maybach Volunteer Fire Department headquarters. Using electronic mapping is determined by the bylaws committee. For place of employment, the committee shall procure a document for the applicant's employer to ensure she will be available to render service. So just because you work here doesn't mean you can join either. Your employer, employer has to be.
So, are they going to be showing proof only when they first join, or are they going to have to do it yearly?
I believe it is yearly.
That's what I, that's what I couldn't find. Like, I saw where they had to originally show it, but I don't see where they have to show it any time after, unless it just goes by good faith, hey, I moved, but I'd rather have it in writing.
I will double check and get back to you.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, like you said, it's only going to help you guys recruit potential candidates.
Yeah. Great. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
So this, tonight is the last meeting in March. Our next meeting is April 3, here at Town Hall. Also, the Town Hall will be closed on Friday, the 29th, for Good Friday. The 29th is also, again, at the VFW 5491, Vietnam Veteran Remembrance Day. They're having a ceremony, it's their fifth annual, they're having a ceremony at 11:30 at The Post. Our cleanup, townwide cleanup is April 22 to the 26th. If you contact either the highway department or my office at Town Hall at Extension 139, Joanna can sign you up. And we've got at both the highway and at Town Hall, we have the orange bags, the protective vests and the pickers. We're having our shred-it day on the 20th, Saturday, the 20th. The trucks will be at the Geary In-Line Memorial Rink right across from the Mahopac Volunteer Fire Department. That's going to be from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM on April 20. And, oh, about the $2 million from Lawler, we also have 1.5 million in ARPA funds, so we should be able to do the parking lot and the grass there, the first phase of Swan Cove.
And actually, actually, I think that, well, the totality of it would be in three. But we can't, that's, that's like eight to $10 million, so we can't afford to do it all at one time.
This is why I asked the question, how much can it be?
Yeah, so I'm going to.
I have, like, the side house, like, the library's been paid for that for 20 years.
No, we're finishing off the first phase.
Right, so.
We're going to make sure we get phase one done correctly, and then we'll move on to phase two.
And the, we actually have, just like we did for the airport park, for the playground, we're also going to be having a rendering going up in time for the farmer's market, so everybody can see what exactly the phase one is going to include and what it's going to look like. And, and that'll be, phase one will be paid.
Do you think it's going to take more than two or three years, or you think it's going to be done in a year, or?
Oh, the whole project?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, it's a couple of years.
A long, yeah, a few years.
But it's a down, but it's.
Not the first phase, the first phase.
But that's including of a whole downtown revitalization. Park, the new parking.
Are we talking about meters or no meter?
That's on the table.
Not right now.
That's still on the table.
Well, no, just a reminder or something, so we can.
Yeah.
So, anyway, like I said, you'll see the rendering, it'll be up there before the farmer's market, so that everybody can come and see what it's going to look like. So, it'll be nice. The totality of the project.
Yeah, but we'll get this part done.
Yes, we will.
It's an important part, too.
Yeah.
And who's doing the work? Do you have an idea?
Has to go.
Has about to bid.
Yeah, the design is almost done, we'll have that go out, and then it'll be bid and.
Are we going to get it out this year?
Uh, depends on when the bid comes back and all that.
We're hoping, yeah.
We're hoping to break ground in 2025.
March 26, Assemblyman Matt Slater will be hosting Vietnam Veterans Day at the Capitol. Join him for a luncheon, Capitol tour and recognition ceremony. My grandfather and I attended last year, it was a great event. If you know any Vietnam veterans that are interested in going up that day, contact Assemblyman Matt Slater's district office at 845-278-2923.
And this Friday is the last Knights of Columbus up in Carmel Fish Fry. We had about 250 orders last week, so this is the last one for this year. So if you haven't tried it yet, you should definitely give it a shot.
And I just wanted to remind everybody, as I mentioned last week, we're having one more meeting at the end of this month for the master plan. We're going to finalize the planning board comments, continue with that, and that does include the zoning part of it. After that, it'll go out to a public hearing, so we'll get that, we'll make sure that we have that out, you know, as soon as we can. I'm hoping now May, I was hoping April, but I want to make sure we give enough time for people to know that it's going out and to read through the document, because it's a huge document, seven years in the making, or five years in the making, way too long. But, you know, it, it's moving now, so hopefully by May, we'll be able to vote on it and get it moving.
So we're going to get a motion to go to executive session. We've got insurance to discuss potential litigation and personnel. Can we get a motion to? All in favor? Aye. See you on the 3rd.